Good evening, and our another alternative meeting area. Welcome to tonight's meeting at November 8, Cedar Springs Public Schools Board of Education. We're starting at 6:45. So would rise for me to the punch allegiance and let's use the nice big flag on the wall.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. Onation under oath, indivisible, with the presence of the聖神
Thank you. And if we could have your whole call please, Secretary Slager. Yes, trustee Bowser.
Here.
Trustee Revard.
Here.
Trustee Vanderhigh.
Here.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Here.
Secretary Slager.
Here.
Vice President Schachner.
Here.
President Reed.
Here.
Thank you, and we have established a forum for tonight's meeting. And that brings us to the adoption of our agenda. And I would entertain a motion.
Go.
For any discussion? Having none, Vice President Schachner.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Justy Vanderhigh.
Yes.
Justy Revard.
Yes.
Justy Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed. Yes, the agenda is adopted as presented. And that brings us to gratitude. And I think we're going to have you.
I am grateful that the Cedar Springs March 8th and St. Paul's in Detroit for state finals this Saturday. And I did wonder if we, and I'm so excited that kids have that opportunity.
I would echo that, I was there wishing.
I was there.
Alright, so it's a fun time. Great to see the kids out there enjoying themselves.
I was in both playoffs. And that was very exciting and very grateful just the experience for parents and families. Obviously thankful and excited about the energy was spectacular, yes. Did have girls that ran across country finals also. So it was a lot of action.
I'm grateful for the multitude of opportunities that our students are having to show success academically and extracurricularly with play coming up this week and football this week and winter sports starting. It's just that it's a great time. Be ready.
Hope that was a great reason for us to be displaced here because of the play scenery, but that's totally fine.
I had no idea this week, I think they're saying Friday, Saturday.
Wednesday. Tickets, our tickets are online.
Tickets are online, some of those. They're open.
Yeah, we already set meetings.
Yeah.
Thank you. Alright, on to our high school representative, and you could have Mia with us.
I don't say Mia, is there another high school student here to share? How about Rupert? Thank you both for coming.
So currently we are mainly working on organizing our student council concept. And right, thank you, partners, for everyone who's involved currently in this.
Every other Wednesday.
Yeah, we don't have that much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Keep fun going, you're doing good.
Alright, move on to our consent items, and I would entertain a motion.
So move.
Or?
Vice President Schachner.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Justy Vanderhigh.
Yes.
Justy Revard.
Yes.
Justy Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed. Yes, consent items are approved as presented. That brings us to discussion, and our first item is financial update with Mr. Preston Hay.
Alright, thank you. So I made our financial update extremely quick because there's a lot of other things that I tied into the back end of it, which make discussion and action items. So year-to-date budget update and budget updates are in Wordbook as usual. I did put a fall count update on here, so you can see where we are with the fall count. Looks like we're gonna come in, there are about 3,333 students for the fall. Hoping to get back to those numbers from three years ago. So investments are on here as well through October. You can see where we are fiscal year-to-date, where we were last year for October, the asterisks there. They had printed building site bond investment numbers by last Wednesday, so I. That's it for this, and then there'll be more for discussion this year.
Any questions on the financial piece? Having none, we're going to discuss item D, technology device purchases.
Okay, so this is something where obviously it's one of our initiatives to continue the one-to-one student devices. Some of our devices are somehow old. So working with Rob Egler in August, he applied for a universal service administration, administrative company, pulled by the FCC, this grant through our E-Rate. And we just had to admit that we were going to actually purchase these devices if we applied for the grant. And so that's not a problem anyways, because it was part of our Esser to fund plan to purchase Chromebooks devices and some new teacher devices, because we purchased them last year, but as we have new staff coming in, it's nice and nice. Well, I specifically worded last week, right before I was getting everything out to the board meeting, that we were approved for this grant, it's right here on my discussion items, I gave everybody. This, it's right there in front of you, I wasn't sure what we're gonna do as far as presenting tonight. So on the front page you have my report, but then right behind it you have my discussion slash action items. So anyways, we were approved for $119,960 worth of devices. Everything short of what we applied for, because we could only get $400 per device. Okay, so there was some extra cost associated with you 25 teacher and 10 teacher administrative devices that are on here. So what we're looking for tonight is for the board to take action and actually approve this, so we can place the order and then seek reimbursement through the E-Rate, because we need to do it, we had a quick timeline, because we've committed to it already. So that's right there, you'd be essentially getting 400 Chromebooks for absolutely free. Wouldn't be using Esser phones. Reallocate that for more technology or the other uses down the road, so it's great opportunity. Good price. So I'll entertain any questions you may have, I know it's come up quick. It was off my radar, and then all of a sudden popped on my radar, so I said hopefully we can get this report. So we need to approve it because you've already committed to it? Is that what you said? Great question. We've committed to it because we're approved, we're approved for the Esser funding anyways. So we had to approve, we're sent planned to the state of Michigan. I think we had 600 devices in that, we could do up to 400 on this. So we're not approved by the board, but we're approved by the state as part of that plan. It's just kind of moving those funds, and now we've got this opportunity. So I wasn't planning on bringing a purchase for technology to the board until later in the year with the Esser $2, but because of this opportunity, that's why it's.
If we don't want these devices, you do not have to approve the recommendation.
Absolutely.
So.
But just to.
That always works, right?
Just to be clear, you'd be, you'd be approving the purchase of 129,600, but we'd be reimbursed for 119,900.
Right, that's a, right, that's a great.
So we've got to, we've got to approve the full amount of reimbursement. So it's a net of $9,000.
Seems like the price is right.
It sure does. I'm not far.
Yeah.
I have one. Do you care?
Are there any other questions on devices? Point too much. COVID-19 Preparedness Response Plan, and Jen is presenting.
Alright, in Wordbook you will see a draft of the COVID-19 Preparedness Response Plan, and you will probably recall that we spent a great deal of time looking at this over a year and a half ago when we were starting last school year. We've been fortunate to be in person for much of the time since then, but as a result of receiving new Esser refunding that will be coming our way, and we'll be sharing some plans with people about that, we're required to update this COVID-19 Preparedness Plan so that our board or committee have a chance to say, yep, this is still how we want to prioritize in-person learning, and that is our intent. So we've simplified this considerably. You will notice that the details from building to building have gone away, that a lot of some of the cleaning and sanitation requirements that are no longer with us have gone away, and we've really just simplified it down to the very minimal expectations. So we will follow the guidance that we're given. And if we need to go remote, we will do so following the rules that are in place for people accounting right now. In addition, we added a piece about what to expect with student absence. So if a student is required to be absent for three or more days, they can expect that work will be provided to them. And we've outlined what that should look like. So specifics about learning goals, assignments, and progress toward meeting standards has been outlined here, and we reviewed that with our admin team as well. So looking for discussion, any questions you might have today? And then action on this as of next meeting.
Very good, thank you. Okay, moving on to discussion item D, Cedar View and Red Bull H-bag Equipment Lot Purchase with Preston Hay.
Okay, so on the October 25th board meeting, I discussed purchasing unit ventilators for Cedar View and Red Bull as part of our next stage of buying. At that time, we were planning on using consortium pricing, but actually on my way to that meeting, I had a conversation with our superintendent from Triangle talking about actually doing a two-week bid process to make sure it's a fair, fair process, and get the best price. So we did that, I actually got home from the board meeting on October 25th and posted on state website for bids, gave a two-week window, and we opened the bids this morning, so we could still bring to the board for approvals. So actually in front of you, as part of the packet that I laid out, there's a form here that says Triangle on the top. And I apologize, in my, in my report, I didn't have numbers yet, because again, it was in board book over the weekend, and these were just open this morning. So we had two bids, one from Bull House, who we worked with on the Cedar Trails project, and then one from Train. And their numbers came in within $1,300 of each other, but they're really sharp with their pencils, and if you look through this, I'll give you the really topical, topical level. Our budget for these unit ventilator purchases was $890,000. Okay, and it came in at $792,150. And that included two alternates, that were voluntary alternates. One was the bipolar ionization, which is something that we said we wanted to add, that cleans and purifies the air. Okay, so we'll add that in every classroom in Cedar View and Red Bull. And then the other, the other one was factory-mounted freeze stats. I'm not entirely sure what that is, but it's something that they put in there on the coils from the factory, and I told it something that we really want. So I apologize for not having anything, but that was an unanimous decision from our engineers at Train and Triangle, and Ken had said as much as well. So really great to see us under budget by almost $98,000 on this purchase of equipment. This will allow us to issue a PO with board approvals, even issue a PO, order them, and have them stored, so they'll be in district in May as soon as students leave for the summer. We don't have to worry about supply chain issues, cost inflation, et cetera. Thanks. So it was very exciting about this one, despite the cost of price.
Any questions?
Do you know what the lead president is for? Over there. It seems like it's about three months, four months. Wondering how are we going to get them?
Yeah, well, until I do it now, we should be up. Yeah, if we wait until January, February, it'll be good. This way we'll have by March.
Alright, thank you, President. Moving on to discussion item D, MASP Delegate Assembly Handbook.
So I loaded into board book a copy of the MASP Delegate Assembly Handbook that we were provided by, from MASP. Missy has a copy of it in her hands. It's all marked up, because she is ready. If you recall, Tracy was elected as our delegate for the Assembly, the MASP Assembly in Red Bull. However, Missy is actually going to represent us on Thursday night at the Delegate Assembly. And so I didn't know if anyone had any questions regarding anything in the handbook that they wanted us to review, or Missy, if you had any highlights from the handbook that you would like to share?
I won't actually lay down everything, but um, I, Missy, I don't know, I mean, there's something that I, it's just pretty much, pretty, that's low, I guess, I think it's almost like a formality. Um, the only, the only thing that I kind of looked at that was, is just the section that they were talking about, the ISD, the relationship with ISD, having over global boards. And so I don't know if you guys want to take a look at that, and then get back to me, if you're doing some of that. Um, chuckers by. So, um, it's big, and there's a lot in there, but it's, I didn't see anything really that's really gonna change or anything like that.
Crazy, what do you?
Yeah, I'm not. Yeah, I was just telling Missy right before the meeting, you know, when I went before, I wished we had talked a little bit more, there were a couple things that I did have there that should be improved from the fold, because we had it discussed it, and I didn't want to misrepresent the board. But I didn't, I didn't see anything, I didn't see anything here that was anything new or not going there. In place. I felt like it was straightforward as well, so. But I would invite other board members, if you haven't, if you haven't looked at it, to look at it. It's about 40 pages. Big language, there you go. It's crossing here an hour, so, but it was, I mean, it just seems more of a formality.
So I think, Missy, you have a pretty good idea of where each board member sits. I mean, yes, we'll pull for it, and we'll give you our input, but if there's something that you need to pick up about the flag, we're all pretty, you know, programs. I would encourage you. Thank you for coming.
Oh, for sure, we'll probably, we'll look to. Definitely, I'll be there Thursday, Friday, Saturday. But it's local, so it differs how that's actually a whole bit.
Right, any questions? Okay, discussion item F, rationale, policies, and practice of book selection, use, and review update, Jen Abraham.
Alright, I wanted to take this chance to update you on the work that we've done since the last board meeting, really regarding book selection, use, and review process that we follow. And we're really looking at several parts of the work here. So one is about how are books selected to be used in class? Another is about how are they used in class? And a third is about how are they reviewed if there's a concern? So I've been working in all three of those lanes, and would just like to share some draft in here with you right now and let you know where we are in the process. So we start with some draft core beliefs, and the purpose of literacy is so rich. Really, literacy is something that we want all of our students to be fluent in. We want them to be readers, writers, thinkers, speakers, listeners, and able to process information through what they read. We know that students are more likely to be engaged what they read when they're able to choose some of the books that appeal to them. And for that reason, we have broad classroom libraries, because our students are very diverse. We learn that they know, we know that they learn to navigate complex texts better when they're reading books that offer reasonable challenges. And one of the things that's tricky about that is as you get up into the high school grades, books that offer reasonable challenges are often adult award-winning books. And so if you remember the draft that you had drawn when you were in school about the complex nature of a plot and how it unfolds, there has to be a conflict in it. And often that means the characters are messy and gray and burly. So we expect that, especially in our 6th and 12th choices that we're making. And as I said, because we have a diverse student body with different needs, life experiences, and social identities, we need to make sure that we have books for that wide range of students. The Common Course Based Standards really drive our work in defining the level of rigor and depth of knowledge our students need to have in order to engage in the right level of work and be prepared for what comes next for them. And we use a PITS model of instruction. That means some of it is direct instruction from a teacher, some of it is small group work with other students that might be coached or facilitated by the teacher, or might be coached or facilitated by students, and some of it is independent reading work. So those are draft core beliefs about our literacy program. We also recognize. We also recognize that our families, our students, and our parents have rights as well. So all students have the right to view, read, and listen to library and classroom resources. They all have the right to be challenged, to think critically, to process ideas that differ from their own, and to come to conclusions about variety of perspectives and experiences and issues. In addition, any student or parent who has a concern has the right to express that and to be taken seriously. If a parent or a guardian does not like the choice of reading, they have the absolute right to guide that with their children. And then they also have to give that same right to other parents or guardians. So again, those are just some draft thinking ideas. As I said earlier, we have three different scenarios. So there is full class reading, and that means all students are reading one book that's been selected, as this is an exemplar, that all students need to read in order to understand the Common Course Based Standards, so practice those together. Full class reading should be, a novel that's chosen as full class reading should go through a review by the department that is being asked to be read in. So for example, if a social study teacher said, "All students must read this book, All Nightmares", then that department should have reviewed that first to say, yeah, that's really the best book to teach those standards. It should also go through a committee process where we have parents involved in that choice, as Val, as myself, and a building principal. And then once it's approved through that process, it will come to the Board of Education, just like a textbook. So when we think about different resources that we adopt and say, these are our tier-one resources, we're using them for all students, that's what a whole class reading really is. Okay, so that's the process we're thinking about right now for that. And by and large, the books that are whole class levels are approved in that way already, because they usually come as part of a resource that we've adopted through the board process. I think what we heard about in our last board meeting was books that are on a list for for a book club. So those are books that a small group of students will be reading together and processing through. Those also should be reviewed by the department, and one thing that we should have in place there is reasons why these books were chosen on this list of books. So that's something that we're working on a process for vetting materials that teachers reviews prior to a book going on the list. And we want that, we want parents to know that there are choices within those parameters. So if the purpose is to read a contemporary book from a certain perspective, that's an award winner. We want it to be clear that that's the purpose. So if a parent says, boy, these aren't, these don't fit my needs as a parent with my child, they have the opportunity to know, what could I recommend that would fit those needs? So that's book list or book club reading. Independent choice reading has less oversight because it is wide open choice. So usually those books come from literacy organizations that recommend lists each year. They are book award winners that have won high accolades at the state national or international level, or they're, they're respected national literacy leaders like Penny Kittle, or Ernie O'Griff, or Donaldan Miller, who say, this is a book, a list of books that students at this level should read. In addition, student needed interest really drives those independent choices. So you would expect that in a classroom library, there would be books that you wouldn't pick as a reader, because it would not be your interest or your need, but others have that interest for that. But those are really the three different scenarios, and we're looking at processes all the way along the path to ensure that we're making nice choices for our students. So what happens if someone says, hmm, this book doesn't fit the bill for what I think my child should be exposed to? Well, we recognize that parents have that right, just like they would help their students engage with television shows, apps on their phone, movies that they watch, video games that they're allowed to play. We also would hope that they're involved in their child's reading life. This weekend, my daughter, who's 25 years old, was sharing with me, that was one of the best things that you ever taught me was, if I wanted to read something challenging, you were gonna read it alongside of me, and we were gonna have conversations about that as we am. That's absolutely a parent's choice and responsibility to help with that. So when a concern is brought, we ask that it start with a review request form, which is in draft form right now. It allows a parent to say, this is my concern, here's why I have a problem with this, here's where you can find it in the book. And it starts with the teacher, so there's a conversation with the teacher first. The teacher then would let the principal know that there's been a concern raised. We would discuss that matter with, depending on whether it's whole class book list or independent reading, we can discuss it with those who have made the similar choice, to let them know that there's been a concern raised, and that we want that to have the choice about whether their child continues reading that book as well. And then we have a committee that will review that, to determine, is this a good fit? Should it remain, or should we make a different choice of something that would fit better? So we have a draft of that ready to go for parents who might have a concern. And it would begin by asking the teacher. Our sources that we're using to develop this process, we are not the first to have books raised in concern. We are definitely not the first. So there are many who've not before us and done some good work. The National Council of Teachers of English has a really great toolkit for this. The American Library Association has done quite a bit of work on this. The Michigan Department of Education has been involved in the conversations that I've been having about this. We really started this work about six months ago with the notion that I had that we needed to have something more proactive in place, because we had some gaps in our process. So it's something that we've been working on for a bit with those organizations, as well as other schools in Ottawa, Kent, and this meeting town. So as a big deal, last week, we met together on a Zoom and talked about what the different processes were in the different districts. We also are looking to court rulings and legal definitions, and we will check with our legal council to make sure that we're within the bounds of what our policy tells us that really drives what we do, and what have other schools encountered that we need to be mindful of and think about. So our next steps, really, I'm at the point where I have invited teachers, 6th through 12th grade teachers, to come and give some feedback on the guidance document, so that will be happening over the next several weeks. We want to make sure, as I said, that the processes and guidelines need advice from legal counsel and are in alignment with our board policy, but I did use our board policy in creation of several forms to make sure that we really are mindful that they are tightly aligned. We will revise as we receive that feedback, and I'll look to me to share progress with you next week as we evolve. And I can help you answer questions.
If I can piggyback, Jen not only uses board policy, but also the administrative guidelines that we have in place to, to drive this work. And so rather than creating new language, new, uh, measures, uh, procedure, we utilize, uh, measures that we have in place and prove in, in our administrative guidelines or our policy.
I, um, comments, I actually think this is a great start. And definitely I can tell that he put a process to throw that together in two weeks. I know you couldn't, so.
Right.
It's definitely, uh, yeah, definitely a great setup. I think it's neat, so thank you for jumping on.
It's good work and teachers appreciate it too. It's really good work. We all appreciate the opportunity to say, "Oh, goodness, people appreciate some guidance on this." Sure. Let's be super clear about what's okay.
Yeah, I, I think I would just have a question about at this point. Well, first I'll just say, I agree, I think this is super helpful and looks great and I appreciate the work. I, I think my question is just, it, um, you know, it feels like this is a little bit reactive. I know, I know there was, it was kind of, kind of reactive. Have you sensed that teachers, this is an opportunity that teachers are taking to review what is in your classroom libraries and looking for close reading because of, you know, because of this container. Again, to be proactive about future concerns.
Great question, Tracy. I've had the chance to talk with the sixth through eighth grade teachers most closely. I would work with the high school teachers, we'll begin next. So, uh, we want to be clear that the, the work where it really needs to have a clear vetting process is at the whole class novel and the book list of book club. A classroom library is like a public library in that there will be a wide array of things. And again, we'll rely on organizations beyond ourselves to say, "These books are appropriate at this level." So, uh, as a former English teacher with probably four thousand titles in my classroom library, there's no way I could have read or reviewed every single title. But the work would, it would not be possible with the time that we have. But what I put on a book list or what I said you must read as a whole class, I absolutely should have reviewed those. So this gives us the chance to say, "Okay, let's put in place, what's the bridge going to be from where we are to where we want to be? How much is the reasonable amount of time for that to happen? And what are we going to do in time to make sure that parents know that they have choices too?" Because that's an important, that's an important piece of this that as a parent, you do get to oversee what your child reads and what they are engaging in. So it'll take us a little bit of time to get that done. That's something that can happen, you know, after Thanksgiving weekend and it's all set to go. Uh, but it's certainly work that we can get started at right now.
So this is sixth through twelve. Do we also have something for the elders?
Not yet. Um, I have a draft started, but I'm really focusing my attention on this.
And part of the challenge with this work is, you know, in, in many courses, the content is geared towards those students who are going to be pursuing higher level rigor uh, in terms of literacy or literature. And so many of the, the books that are selected are books that are award-winning books for adult readers. And as was pointed out in our last board meeting, not all of our students are adults. And they have varying levels of maturity in terms of their abilities to handle different levels of, of adult content or different levels of content. And so, you know, the expectation that a fifth grader or a third grader would be reading content at an adult level is very small unless you have incredibly off-the-chart gifted students of those grade levels, you know. So to Jen's point, we, we will have a review process aged well because we know that there could be objectionable materials at all levels. But we were trying to start first things first and, and address the, address the concerns.
For sure. Yeah, I think that it's very clear that the, that it's addressed. Just want to make sure that it's not that, yes, but also, you know, um, section of kids that. It just sounds like you aren't, it just wasn't that.
Yes, I do have draft and I think, um, you know, this, this six-to-twelve draft has gone through probably ten or twelve iterations and it keeps getting longer. I keep thinking, oh, we should add this and we need to make sure to think about that and the children get some feedback. So I think that will really help inform the K five one as well. And make it a little bit simpler. I would imagine we would have a similar process in that, you know, there's a vetting process for what makes it, um, pile in the list. And then there's recommendations, like I said, from, you know, national, national and state level literacy leaders about what looks negative in classroom library.
And also methods for a parent to raise a concern and to bring it to our attention.
We have a checklist that you're familiar.
So in the next several weeks, I'll be meeting with sixth through seventh grade teachers. I have created verbal discussions after school with them to, um, to have them take me a minute to process through that and make sure that, you know, we have all of the data that we consider. We are planning to start using the process, knowing that that revises needed pieces going to be important. Anytime I've talked to someone about it, they've brought up an interesting perspective that informs how we might adjust it so that it meets the needs of parents and it meets the needs of students. So I would hope that I would have an update for you in two weeks that will show you a little bit more progress. And then perhaps in two more weeks, be able to say, "Okay, I think we're ready to, you know, show you the whole thing." Yes, and feedback as well. But also, you know, we want to check with our advisors to make sure that we're not missing anything that we don't even know about.
So I appreciate the work you spent on Jen. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Um, I'll just say for me, and I know I'm, I, I can be a conservative Christian, I guess that's who I am. We heard three minutes of content that I found personally offensive at my level and I have a master's degree. So I'm imagining that that's inappropriate content for sixth through twelve, regardless of what that person's parent wants them to read. That's content that should not be in our school. I consider that borderline pornographic and definitely the sexual content. There has got to be mature reading levels at an adult level, college grade level, master three level that doesn't contain that kind of material. Because I want to be able to look my community in the face and tell them that I'm safeguarding their kids, making sure that there's appropriate content. And I feel like what we heard the last week definitely was not appropriate content. So I feel like we've got a process in place to filter that out. But from my perspective, that's, that's really what I'm hoping the end of that looks like. Make sure we can catch some of that so the parents don't have to catch it. Because at that point, we've already exposed kids to inappropriate content if they have to go through the vetting process. So again, I, I know we have to start somewhere. It feels like it gets great work going there. And, and maybe it's just a checkpoint for me. Maybe I'm an ultra-conservative on the board. But I mean, if I could just ask my board members to raise, if you find that content last week inappropriate, the three minutes of content, pick a see your hands. I'd like to see your hands. I saw just a checkpoint for me because I realized I could have been the ultra-conservative and, and it's been a while since I got out of school. But I would not want my kids, my son or daughter, exposed to that material. So I appreciate the work you're doing, Jen, to make sure that we're, we're not exposed to kids to that content.
Just, just another thought I do, and I, I appreciate her explaining. I totally understand the situation of not being able for a classroom library. I'm not able to read everything that all of the titles that are. I'm just wondering if we can maybe make that work here even for this. I mean, I mean, just generally as a parent, I mean, I think a lot of it's what they would like. There wouldn't be that content available to their students in their classroom. But if they understood, you know, how titles are coming in, if some things are helping to tolerate works in the classroom, then maybe they will be more proactive. So that's just a thought. If, if it's not possible to back everything, the teachers and the parents, it's a good thing.
Yep. That's a good point, Tracy. Part of the document includes a note for, um, teachers to send to parents outlining the process as well as outlining the fact that classroom libraries are diverse and may include future content. There's a tool called Common Sense Media that parents can use to find out what is the level of this book. And it's not something that we decide. It's something that's decided at a much broader level. It gives, um, information about what might flag as concerning, depending on, and, you know, to your point, um, as a conservative Christian, different things might flag for you than would flag for others. So it's hard, you know, to really, we can't make that judgment for every parent. Parents have very specific views and beliefs that would guide what choices they would make for their children. And we need to be careful to allow them to have that choice. The guidance also about taking the book as a whole, not taking just the book. So the American Library Association is really clear about that. And we're, we're taking that part because they've gone through this before. But we do have some tools that we put in for, um, teachers to send to parents. And we're going to be very transparent. Feel free, we encourage you to research purpose reviews, look at common sense media, what fits with your values and your morals and your belief system, and how does that work for your child. Lots of that we need to see that as a partner of us. Any comments for Jen?
We'll, we'll thank you, Jen, for that work and we'll continue to listen and share with any comments that you have.
All right, thanks. Item F, we'll move to item G, the Cedar View Furniture Purchase of the first day.
So this is a, uh, let's say, BP comes back from last board meeting, we discussed furniture procedure view. Um, so bringing this back up for potential action this evening. Uh, what's been done since October twenty-fifth, uh, we did meet with another vendor, uh, Mr. Schawfer, Mr. Smith, and I, with Custer, uh, Grant Rapids. I live there team, um, unbeknownst to me, our, our, our lead, uh, sales rep there went on a, a trip for her ten-year anniversary. So I haven't been able to get a quote for it yet, but I talked to her today and she'll have it by end of this week. Um, our plan is to use S R three dollars for this furniture refresh, okay, for the whole district. Um, and going back to the survey results that we've gotten from staff, one of the, I think it's the second most requested thing is facility upgrades. So as I talked about with the bond with bipolar ionization, a lot of that part of air purification is being taken care of already. So having classroom furniture that's easily movable, easily cleanable is something that we're really going to take a look at, uh, district-wide, wherever it's needed. Not necessarily in some buildings, but definitely as Cedar View, where the D is the greatest. So, um, we received a quote from Hayward, we received a quote from Bean, hopefully Custer this week. There's samples over at Cedar View which are being, uh, discussed. There's layouts and, and, uh, and actual physical samples as well that we discussed and shown to teachers. Um, and then obviously that'll include with the cluster materials as well. What I'm looking for potentially tonight is for it to take action to approve the purchase of furniture for Cedar View. Okay, so it's in my, it's in my discussion and action, uh, back in mind. But I'll be actually having time for the November twenty-second board meeting. And then the last board meeting of the year is December thirteenth. Um, so with the timeline, you know, consortium pricing is set to raise at the end of the calendar year. We don't want to miss out. We discussed that a little bit last time where an eight-thousand-dollar classroom might turn into a nine-thousand-dollar classroom. We've been at ten, twelve percent price increases. Uh, you know, we're still going to do our due diligence. We're still going to make sure we have all the voices heard in this. We're not going to crush it. Still have a month and a half. Uh, but, uh, you know, this has been approved as an allowable expense for S R three. I have, I actually put my email in here, uh, if anybody had a chance to look at it in board book, Ted Walter saying, yep, that's a lawful expense. Uh, so our plan is to wrap more funding for S R three into the overall, uh, plan. But starting at Cedar View, we have to afford to approve an amount not to exceed a hundred and eighty thousand to really do that building in twenty seconds. So I take any questions they have. Again, that's, that's kind of, that's, uh, that's up to the board. Not to approve that tonight or wait until, uh, December. Second.
And about the last, I think, uh, we'll be getting some chairs that are going to be a little wider, looking at a minimum that's just around.
Yeah, I mean, we're looking at flexible seating. It really seems like there's nothing that's specific that I was hoping to, from Bean and Hayward. We didn't ask the question of Custer, but I'll definitely ask that. Um, you know, I will say that the chairs we're looking at for the fourth and fifth grade building at all are, you know, there's such a wide range of sizes of students in that, that those grade levels anyways. They certainly won't be in small chairs. So I think that we would make sure that they're, they're large enough for, for myself to sit at. Because quite frankly, there's fifth graders that are almost as big as me, you know. So I think we'll take care of it.
And, and the other big piece, we're looking at a separate table and chair, uh, system. Right. And I understand. So that will give greater flexibility for students as well.
Won't have them attached.
I just know it's uncomfortable to sit on chairs. It's not, it's not ideal.
So sure, I'm sure that, uh, I can, I, I just went to first grade conferences for my daughter last week. Very cool. I do know, uh, when we went to Custer, their desks that we were looking at were wider slightly. Which was nice. I haven't seen, I, I have seen Hayward's furniture, which is compared to, uh, Custer. I think their chairs are very terrible as well to Custer ones. Did see one later. I, I think that are appropriately sized. But the question I have, if we approve these funds, are we starting point to save those bills for back quarter or are we just going to like this? So we're definitely going to go with whatever suits us. So I've got the prices from Hayward and Bean already. They're quite a bit lower than this one. So I'm left a little bit in there because I anticipate Custer to be more expensive. But I follow at the same time. Essentially, I mean, we'll see. That's kind of the industry last vote. So, you know, it leaves a little bit of room. We're definitely not going to go with the cheapest. We're going to go the best, one to last and want to, want to listen to the voices that people have. So, you know, that's, uh, takes the question briefly. Everybody, type situation. And it may be that the best chair comes from one and best desks come from different ones, as long as they'll work together. And that's why, quite frankly, Hayward's had the, um, a sample of a desk that wasn't what they put in. I said, I really need to have the desk that's, that's in this, in this board plan because I think people are going to see it. So, well, it's got to be shipped in and sent to a place.
One of the big structural differences that we're seeing in terms of manufacturing process is in regard to how the leg is attached to the work surface. Uh, the Bean system, the leg is attached to the work surface with six, uh, screws. Um, with, uh, Hayward desks, it was a more beefy structure. Uh, but still it's attached to the work surface, you know, drilled into the work surface itself. Um, one of the things that I really appreciated about the Custer system tables that we were looking at from Custer, which are manufactured. by Smith Furnishings down in Texas, is that they have a steel frame that the legs are attached to. And then the desk is attached, the work surface is attached to the steel frame. So as, as students are moving their tables around in the classroom, uh, that energy, that's friction, that's coming off the, the table being dragged across the carpet or across the floor is transmitting into the frame of the leg system instead of transmitting into the work surface, which is in turn loosening those screws. We find a long-term investment, uh, here. And, you know, we've all walked past multiple tables like that with a leg missing. And you just can't flip that leg back in. Like, once it gets ripped out, it's virtually impossible to, to repair. Even as amazing as Vic is and his team is, uh, in terms of maintenance on furnishings, that's just a really difficult prepare to make to have a long-lasting, uh, successful mission in a classroom. And so, you know, we're going to be considering those types of things as well, uh, as far as longevity. We want to be good stewards of these resources and give the greatest return on that investment as possible.
So last time we met, we talked about 19 classroom to $150,000. Tonight we want to improve not to exceed $180,000. But that's the difference in the quality he's talking about potentially. That's what you're trying to build with. That's why I anticipated potential price increase in custom. Because quite frankly, Scott's gonna try. It seemed like the quality of the custom furniture was superior, I would say. So without having a quote, I was hoping to have a quote. Sure. Get it? So there it is. I mean, that's not to say we can come back once we got that for Custer. And quite frankly, if, if the teachers and staff at U want Custer. Obviously, if they look at the other ones, they look at Hayward, they were, you could say, these are the best to move away. Put on that pad. And then we obviously just wouldn't spend this. Well, I think the dollar was fair. It's what I mean about, you know, we have three choices. So we're not absolutely certain. You may, or we've got something we have assigned. I just want to verify that. On 50, you talked about the specific to a specific brand style. Right. And I've got some other choices, but important if you have the money to make that decision. And that's a great point too, about pricing. All of these vendors were consortium pricing. So these are all pre-git prices, state of Michigan. You don't have to go through that whole process, which allows us to choose. Make sure to have questions.
Let's just serve a state of furniture.
No, that's, the lead time is about four, six weeks. That's what they've all said. So we ordered in December. We could have in January, but that was a matter of course, the time to discuss the last. You know, it's really a matter for us to get P O L for it. So we can lock in this 2020 price. But realistically, we probably wouldn't get certain classrooms until summer, winter break, fall, spring. That's a part of the price where they actually come out, they will install the classrooms. Imagine we'll have to structure our classrooms. We'll figure that out.
And there are some really neat nuances of quality, you know, so for example, um, all of these chairs have rivets in them. They're holding the seat to the metal legs, um, consistent across the industry. Now it's a rivetless chair so that the chair base, the seat has cool pegs on it. Those pegs sit down into, uh, spaces on the leg systems. The Custer chair is actually a different design, so it doesn't have cool legs. But it's designed in such a way that the chair, when students pick it up or when students, when they place the chair on the table, the, the chair rests on the bottom of the seat portion. So the legs don't interfere with that chair being placed up on the chair that are up on the table or surface that way. You know, so the advantages to that type of system is you don't have students like flipping the chair over and walking their neighbor or trying to put the chair way up on the table so that the legs are down. So there, there are several ergonomic factors that are at play that we'll be considering as we look at the different options.
Yeah. And that's what they call the chair. They all have one like that as opposed to the four-legged chair. The drawback is you can't stack them. And we actually purchased some like that from high school this year as well. So. But that's really the start of honestly, that's really the work of the, of the staff at the school. Does they see things and know things?
Question, item H is our last question item for tonight. Cedar, for S R three process and progress with Jennifer Chris. All right. So we wanted to take a chance to give you an update on, um, S R three spending. And you'll get the chance to see after. So we got employees, we chose their top three areas of, uh, needs that they indicated, classroom furniture, staffing and instructional supports. And so with the S R relief spending, we might as well have enough detail to be able to answer questions that might come your way and understand why we made these choices. There we go. So classroom furniture. As we said, the requirements of S R three from the federal government require that we use some of this funding to safely return to in-person learning or continue in-person learning because we're reducing the transmission of the virus. Flexible CD will allow us to do that. And we think that it's the best use of, um, that little part of that COVID relief funding that would give us the best outcome for students and the best opportunity for students from these public schools as opposed to spending it, for example, on masks or hand sanitizer or things like that that would also fall in that bucket. So we will have to report to N E E how we're using the funds to mitigate COVID-19. So our current plan is that we would take some of our mixed and matched furniture that is often difficult to clean and, um, sometimes blocked covered and replace it with what Chris just talked about. That's one of the buckets and why we chose classroom furniture. The next bucket. His staff. And again, we're required to consider how will we address the impact of lost instructional time with evidence-based practices? So what our staff indicated is that we really have, it's been great to have smaller class sizes because we have students more individualized attention. So, um, using the fund in this way will allow us to continue to have students learning at grade level material with a smaller class size where a teacher can quickly diagnose gaps and adjust their instruction to a smaller group of students. In addition, this allows us to keep our interventionists doing intervention. First, talk about some of the staffing shortages that we've had. And one of those is the complexity that come when there aren't enough teachers and our interventionists have to step in as classroom teachers, which allows, you know, it doesn't allow for intervention to be happening. So we'd like to use the money for that. There's another pot of S R three coming that will be used for after-school and for summer programming for a very targeted group of students. So please know that that will also be part of a whole thing we're talking about is that program.
I was just going to say, uh, it's appropriate. And we have that district wise, it's down about 150 students, which I was hoping a little bit about. By using some of the S R three dollars here, it allows us to maintain our current staff, uh, keep class sizes that was trying to settle, but not lose those. Because we know we're going to need those, actually, to come back and insert new people. So it allows us the flexibility to have interventions, have substitute teachers, you know, pay the floating substitutes as we do. Really retain our staff, even though especially at an elementary level, we're not at where contracts says class sizes can be pumped.
And then lastly, instructional supports. So again, that academic impact of lost instructional time. One of the areas that we improved is offering some, um, supports for teachers to guide instructional strategies that help them in any new materials or resources that we've implemented. So having another professional walk alongside them to reflect with them, to model teach with them, to come observe and give them feedback in a non-evaluative way in our tier one, all students, every day instruction. So that will allow us, um, to continue doing that work so that teachers have that support right out there at the ready. And then in addition, again, that other pot of money called 11 T that we'll be talking about more in the future will continue that intensive and targeted intervention and it will require a determined approach that we've ever used for after-schoolers. Will allow us to address that, um, lost instructional time or interrupted instructional time in a really strategic way. So why these? Why did we pick these? Well, first, we surveyed our client group and they were the top three areas that came up. But also because there's going to be a fair amount of federal oversight on these funds, we wanted to choose areas that allowed us the most flexibility to address interrupted learning in other ways with general fund dollars or other grantments that we have accepted to us. For example, purchasing new resources for sixth grade E L A, purchasing new not resources that are evidence-based and rate higher than reports. Purchasing new intervention materials for MAP-5. Continued training for teachers and interventionists in evidence-based practices. So as an example, we have two trainers in district who will soon be certified to train others in the B V M R, which is a MAP recovery program, which they've already begun some early work on. And it's tremendous the outcomes that they're seeing for that. In addition, some of our teachers are hyping some people up the corner at the elementary level and we're seeing some really fantastic outcomes in that regard. So it's something that we want to think about. How do we scale this up without stressing everyone out tremendously in a way that's supportive, but also giving our students what they need? And then also we will be able to refresh technology in terms of our infrastructure and our hardware and possibly teaching the learning stations so that they're more mobile, that they're more responsive to what teachers need and adaptable to today's construction.
So what we also want to finish with was, we've received a lot of federal dollars, COVID relief dollars, S R dollars. Today, we're currently in the process of spending the S R two funds this year. But we spent the S R one, it was, I won't go through all the different sections of the state code. Uh, but there's been different buckets that the state has said, the federal government has said are allowable buckets for us to spend these dollars. So, uh, in total, this all began back in 2020. We actually spent about $210,000 on Pro Books Educational Technology in May of 2020. And through this date, through the S R two, we'll spend over $3.3 million of it. These are the different buckets they've fallen into. So, um, just some examples, I can't see that near so. Um, I guess Scott's, I made it, so I should have it on the right. But, uh, you know, obviously we did classroom technology, hotspots, we provided the internet for, uh, for families at home last year. We're still doing for some families this year. We've had to increase our firewall with all the traffic coming in and going out to make sure we're safe. So that's that first bucket, educational technology, you see, under $61,000. Bought new devices for all staff members. The next bucket is developing, uh, that's, uh, cleaning materials. I'll walk over here. I won't read through them all. You guys can see them. We've obviously, we've, we've put a lot of money into addressing the learning loss of students. So through our canvas, uh, the C K A L A curriculum, that's K five literacy curriculum this year. Professional development for teachers, uh, in August of 2020, especially for them to get up to speed on, on remote learning and instructing over the internet. You can see almost $1.8 million there, different instructional supports across the board. So this is really where, where our spending has been so far. All approved and gone through, um, the board over the last year and a half, two years. It's been quite a ride. So any questions anybody has there? Well, I wanted to add a little bit of clarity on what we've spent so far and how it's fit into the different buckets as we've done. So. Anything to add there?
I think, you know, one of the pieces of feedback that we're receiving about S R three, um, spending plan is why aren't you spending this on learning loss? But what you can see with that bar rock really is that we have spent a considerable amount of money on learning loss. And the flexibility that we'll appreciate from the way we are spending our S R three money is that it will screw you up other money that we've used to spend on learning loss. So just keep that in mind as people maybe ask you, why aren't you spending this on learning loss? We're not spending those exact $10,000 on it, but we are spending what in that learning loss and interrupted learning. Has to open doors technically for the opening season. I know they were backing me out there. Thank you. Thank you for explaining. If you have had questions, we can sit down and do that. They're important. All right. So that's the end of our discussion items. It brings us to public comments. And we do have some folks that have signed up for public comment and it would be the time of the board listens to your public comment. We won't be responding this time, so don't pay a penny. So we will commence with public comment. If anybody has one, go ahead, bring up now the, uh, start.
All right. So our first public comment comes from Kathy Paul.
Hey, I have worked at the middle school for about seven years in food service in the blue wire building that's almost unavailable. G R B S should be embarrassed and ashamed at the quality of service to the seniors from public schools. The first few years of working at the middle school, we had two janitors during the day and did a fantastic job. Ever since Kathy W. left, janitorial staff has done nothing but come down here. I was told by Ken Simon that the middle school staff only wants one janitor every day. That makes absolutely no sense to me. The staff in our school, all of them, they're still. There's no possible way that one person on a day shift and one person on a night shift can keep it in their school building clean. That has been proven. I've complained many times to my boss about how dirty our kitchen and serving area floors and bathroom are and how the staff itself. The manager Stacy came in two weeks ago with a current day ten janitor so I could show her how dirty the floors are in the bathroom. By the way, the night time supervisor had left a note on her whiteboard stating that she had made sure that we must stop this and had not been touched. But we've got that out to Stacy. I asked Stacy who's taking the rear entry of the building. She said it's not specified, but we should do that. I've talked to some of the staff and developed our look like that. Today I asked the janitor why both large blue dry outs seem cleaner than the other. So there was a step one really. Students are down that hall all the time. Leaks and dust bits and powder are left in cafeteria daily instead of piles being thrown in the trash. Supplies and tools are quickly, are not deployed rapidly. I've talked to several staff that said they're sending things to the who are old things that we now have, but I tell you, nothing has changed. Our middle school food service staff spent many hours cleaning every classroom, all the teachers' offices in the house, with the media center, cafeteria, and the entire kitchen last night. I would see about the entire kitchen and serving area of flooring rather than just that or that. I do not know when the last time these classrooms, a lot of this media center had to clean before that. I'm sure they have not been cleaned since. We wiped over desks, chairs, shelves, we didn't still get a mat with the exterior windows. We worked our butts off. Timus loves him, has respect for our middle school. We want to be proud of our folks. I spent several, I sent several complaints this season. We wanted to call upon those, but I spent several, I sent several complaints this season. They had left a note for the janitor to clean off the two large push carts they had loaded with trash and recycle. They were full of sticky trash on the bottom and one part had wet insulation from the ceiling. And it was all very smelly. You should know what it is, you can't just be living trash, things stuck in carts that need to be cleaned out. Those are, you have their previous janitor and they'll be cleaning. I talked to a parent this last weekend and then she was at school for conferences and she also did that. Stuff in the floors were in the entire school. Have to wonder if anything has been back in at all this year. As certainly know the floors are not as strong as they really. I have not even been to the bathrooms, I've never been there, that look like a gentleman locked in the seat. I could tell you could take time and come and do a good walk into the middle school. We'll be a stop in the kitchen, we'll gladly show our issues. And would like to think that you are so concerned about proving issues that are going to be created. Kelly, this is it. For that, I'll respect our pity. Our time to give it to GRBS and our janitor and do that here is about the same.
Michelle Guppy.
After the wild sign came back and shut the door behind her and locked it and turned around, I suppose the two of us escaped from her. It plain drove, she growled, and the news had begun. A low barby series of wails and chants. Simon's hair was held straight up and half-boned, tapping his head. There were tons of hair, more than she had, down from shoulders to back. She wore heavy makeup, her eyebrows were black veins, her lips were blue red. A former gray sheet of silk under her hair and legs covered her arms. She drew a long wavy dagger from her sleeve and she lifted her arms like an ancient gosh to up to second verse in the book. Warlike man tried to slap her. She held the dagger in both hands and switched to one hand and stared at the dagger. She pushed an invisible switch and the dagger lit up in gold. The music changed, utter rapping moans, then a series of yips. On each yip, she cut apart a piece of belt rope that held her robe together. She teased us for a while, the robe had slips on the sides. One arm flated breast wound here, a leg in sandal laced to the thigh. Finally, after a course of chants and howls, there was a sudden shoo, red sirens. She dropped her robe. She was tall and bosso and sandy, with her hair in a form she could touch the ceiling. Her legs were of forever and she wore a cane collar that looked like a scorched iron cat lock shut. Her stomach was pure and ripe, and her lungs, her breasts, also tasted good. Of course, the seams of the breastplate were children's, made with basey wrapping holes. Hands and scars pulled off them. She held her dagger in her teeth and then she grabbed her weapon, worn in leather, all over the body. She wore thin diamond glasses. She took one off, lightly whipped herself and scoured her chest and belly, then cracked it across the face. I almost fainted. The drums began, Simon's belly fits together gyrating in different temples, so fast her movements blurred. Simon rolled, but my eyes never moved. The drum fell silent. She played with the leather strips that held her arms along together and then suddenly she let it drop. And there they were, wearing only oak tasses that she crowed, first one laying on the other, mesmerizing them. I was dizzy from the time the drum quit. She pulled the tie from her sandals and stepped out of them, threw it in my head. She unsnapped the foam from her hair and held around the face of a dyed water tank. There it was, she stuffed it close and began to brag her hips to the public's world. She reached down into her ironed cane and slowly pulled out a key on a silver string. She was ready, snatched the cane from her fingers and without a tremble at this ancient fist he opened the tether, unhooked it and threw it to the side. And there was a cheese string made of soft black denim spurt. She straddled Sheum's lap and terribly did not let down her weight, helped her castle breasts in her hands. But Sheum put his arms around his teeth and on the face, rest of his torment between her breasts. When she was all dressed, she picked up the shopping bag, pulled up the stripper up and dropped it like a beast. She popped the fallen tassel like this on the floor.
Kristin Reed.
Good evening, my name is Kristin Reed and I'm from Norrington City. I'm here tonight because I would like you to look into the employment of Maureen Baker. Started here in 2019 and is listed as an interventionist at Red Rock. I want to read a quote from the 2013 MLI article about Ms. Baker as it relates to the end of her employment at Tri County Schools, fourteen miles up the road. Instead of pursuing tenure charges, the district entered into resignation agreements with Alz and Baker, who are being paid for the end of their 2013-14 contracts. In response to prospective employer requests, the district will state that Baker, quote, "chose to resign during an investigation of alleged misuse of district technology equipment" and allegations that she sent former high school graduates Facebook communications of a sexual nature on non-work time using her own personal technology equipment, according to the degree and call. During the twenty years at Tri County Schools, Maureen Baker has engaged in multiple inappropriate relationships of a sexual nature with students, both former and parents, including with someone that I loved when they were a minor, despite the omission of this fact in that article. She also engaged in disruptive and inappropriate sexual relationships with other staff members more than once during that time. I am disturbed to see that she is employed in education in any capacity, especially where she has access to young people. I was assured during the investigation at Tri County that she wouldn't be working K-12 again. To see her listed as an interventionist makes me sick to myself. As a current student in the school of social work at Grand Valley State, I understand the private nature of conversations Ms. Baker will be having with her at-risk students. And unfortunately, it is at-risk students that are the exact demographic of Ms. Baker, that Ms. Baker has created her at Tri County in her past. Last week, I pointed the records of who Cedar Springs spoke to at Tri County and the FOIA showed that no one at Tri County was contacted by Cedar Springs during her hiring process. How can this be? It was her longest-running employer. Doesn't it seem strange that someone who is tenured would leave mid-year, float around for a few years and then get a job fourteen miles up the road? And no one got to check on that? Please dig deeper into the conduct of Maureen Baker as I believe she is unfit to work with students of any kind, especially at-risk minors. Thank you.
Sarah Gitchell.
If I can a little bit closer, I don't think that my voice carries very well, so sorry. Sarah Gitchell, I have four kiddos that I homeschool. I had a couple enrolled a couple of years ago and then all the COVID stuff happened. Last meeting, some information was shared about the SIR dollars and I appreciated the extra information tonight. My gut instinct is, is to actually take caution with the SIR funds. I know that you are probably more familiar with the fine print that comes along with that. But I get a little bit nervous that the government, you know, I mean, federal funds might come back in and use more restrictions and say, but we gave you a lot of money. So I, I don't know what that fine print looks like, so I admit I have not looked into that. If I had kiddos that went to school here, I would have emailed probably you and gotten some information. But I guess I just want to give a word of, it's not warning or caution, but like red flags go up for me. And so one of the things that I wanted to share with you is that, you know, you say, boy, I hope that we get some people back eventually. As one of those people that would have had kiddos going here, I, I pay attention enough to say that I won't, I'm liking homeschool more and more. I like the curriculum, I like the freedom. And if, if Cedar Schools is, is going to be reined in by the, the money that the government gives you and if they use it, even, you know, hindsight, if they, if they say, but we've given you a bunch of money, so here's all of the restrictions that we're gonna make you adhere to, I will not consider sending my feedback. I have four, we'd like to be able to send them back, especially for sports. I think that would be great. But as it stands, I, I just thought that it would be good to help you feedback. And if kiddos, if kiddos are being held at home because they're afraid of COVID, the families are afraid, I would hope that they would share their concerns with you and give their feedback. But that's from my perspective. So I'm looking for the future and I'm keeping an eye out to see, you know, what, what can be done. So encouraging you to look at things like that and I know, and I appreciate the work that you're doing already. And I just wanted to say before the time you do that, that I respectfully beg to defer that about the library. I feel like that material could be bettered because I totally have the same feelings and I'm glad that you said something earlier. That I think that there's, there's a way to, and even if it goes to the point of having genres, not having romance novels in one genre and if you wanted to keep the, the, some people would read, some people one category. Wait, no, pornographic material. It works. So I think that it's not being done, it might be quite the process, but I do think that it can be done. The library does it, but it's a genre, so, thank you.
Exxon Hewitt.
I do have a couple of comments though. The, when it comes to readying the materials, honestly, I don't know what you're looking at with building students and actually those, but from my perspective, there is federal law, the state law, federal law against vicinity, so the Material Act, I think, before. There's also the cop laws, seven two two five six five and six seven three. Talking about the seventies, sexually explicit material minors, which is a felony. So this isn't just a matter of taking, yeah, make those out of libraries. I think honestly we should start with, let's not break the law. You know, like let's not put that stuff anywhere near our kids, not because it's, it's against the law. I don't know how to get more blame than that. And I agree, I understand there are people that have different views than I do, but I, I fully respect them. But we're supposed to be protecting our kids from, from behavior that was destructive or even stuff that leads to behavior that is destructive. We should do our best to inhibit that. I mean, as soon as they step out of school, they'll be eighteen, they'll have the free brain to do whatever they want by law. But in their forty years in school, we should get, we say that we have a whole, a hard line when it comes to not allowing destructive material or, or books that even, for that matter, that talk about how to, that lead kids deeper to oppression or cutting themselves or just destructive mental behavior. I mean, if we can't guard against stuff, then what are we doing as parents, you know, what are we doing as, as teachers, as guardians of our kids? If we're saying anything from the world can be brought in and we can't stop it. I think that we can, I think that it is, we can, we must. But I, I am also a Christian and I tend to, to be a, have a hard line on things in military and other, other things in life, led me to do that and say, I can say no, I'm gonna say no, it's gonna be. I get that on this one personally, I have just one opinion, so I do respect other's opinions. I just, if there are laws, I think that we should rely on that. And encourage others to at least protect our kids.
Alyssa George.
Hey, hey, everyone. Everybody hear me? Try to speak really loud. At the last board meeting, I only had enough time to get up and read the passages that I had prepared. Tonight, I wanted to elaborate why I read those passages. My daughter was given a list of seventeen books where she would have to choose four to read and discuss with other peers throughout the year. When this list was handed out to the students, it was stated by the teacher that all books would contain sex. I signed a form at the beginning of the year allowing my daughter to choose choice books off the shelves in the classroom and I would not hold the teacher responsible for anything that she were to read that was in those books. I did not sign a form allowing the teacher to give my books that contained explicit materials. There is a difference, which was stated earlier by Jen, okay? Since the last meeting, Jen has reached out to us to explain that she is working on something and we do appreciate that. One of the, one of my daughter's friends who was in the class that she was in had commented to her last week about how she can understand why her parents were so concerned about the books that she was reading and why we were doing what we were doing. My daughter didn't tell her what we were doing. She merely said, this is why my parents are pulling me out because they don't feel that the books are appropriate for me. There are books out there that have, where there is content without being filled with explicit content. We need to look at the true meat of the book and what it's teaching our kids and not the fact that it has a mobile price seal on it that makes it suitable for the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you and we're about to go. Public comment closed. Onto our action items for tonight. And our first action item is technology device consciousness and an entertaining motion for as presented. So. Any discussion? Having none, Vice President Schochner.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Justice Maderhite.
Yes.
Justice Rebar.
Yes.
Justice Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed.
Yes.
Motion carries for technology purchase. Action item B is Cedar View and Red Rock HVAC equipment bond purchase and I would entertain a motion for as presented. Any discussion?
Point of clarity, we are looking at what else? The use of, training was.
As, as presented. Motion stands, okay, so we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion or point of clarity? Having none, Vice President Schochner.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Justice Maderhite.
Yes.
Justice Rebar.
Yes.
Justice Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed.
Yes.
HVAC equipment purchase is approved. Last action item for tonight is Cedar View classroom furniture purchase. And I would entertain a motion for as presented. Any discussion?
Having none, Vice President Schochner.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Justice Vanderheide.
Yes.
Justice Rebar.
Yes.
Justice Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed.
Yes.
Motion carries for Cedar View classroom furniture. That brings us to our communication portion of the meeting. And for the board, I have a little, an overview from Mr. and I seem to have both the political ticket. Went to the meeting with Sparta Board of Representatives and Ed of London himself in a Zoom meeting, along with two other Kent County Health Department personnel. And we thank Sparta for getting that meeting and including us in it, and we did that on Wednesday, October twenty-seventh. And we appreciated our growing network with the Kent County Voice of Students, and we feel that we're echoing our superintendent's good work, and we don't read on that. And, but for board members, we still speak from a different seat, and we can say things in a different tone perhaps with Mr. London. So our board voice wide that's for the conversation. In short, the Zoom policy was continual, like Dr. Montaigos. Dr. London did give insights that I wished that you would have shared at the faith that you have. There was a different tone that I did appreciate. Dr. London brought to the conversation that he does feel the laws are, they have been there. One thing we could all agree on very basically, that there could be some legislative work to help this process work better. While nothing was changed, it was a valid branch, and Dr. London can know that we let it know very clearly that we're different from our parents' folks. And that we told each of, for our districts, we told in different incidences of how, had we not had the public health order mandated, what we would have done proactively, whether it was mass breaks, using large warning areas, and Mr. Y, I think you agree, that there was a couple of times that we did have this intention, as far as the alternatives that we've done. And we also expressed appreciation to him and to working staff for our high school outbreak, and that that was another good work of help through an outbreak with creativity and staying open and keep everybody breathing fresh air and mask our students. So we, there was good back-up discussion, and while there isn't anything resolved, we were people in the room, we were honored to be in the room, and even though I might not have agreed with you things that you said, we did ask for some revised stats from a University of Michigan study, looking at the counties with mandates, without mandates, specifically for the K through six. The stats that they show for K through twelve. We haven't gotten feedback on that, but that was a good point of, that very possibly could be a different number. So every, many times that we can get in the room to have those conversations, even though we might not agree, we are honored to do that, and let's add anything you certainly may.
Kind of, I felt like a little bit too, and it was Sparta that brought up how they had seating, and that's what they even asked, if we have our kiddos seated six feet apart, may they remove their masks? And he said, "Well, break to the mandate." No, but send me the pictures of what that looks like, and so, I mean, at least he was open to looking at, like, not just masking, but if the kiddos are there, like, take their mask off, or even having mask breaks. And so he did, he was, it seemed like he was interested in what we had to say and show anyways, and so I did appreciate that, and I think he really voiced that how we went about it, totally put us in a pinch, and if we could have done other, we could have other ways, if we would have had time instead of, and I think he recognized that, but my understanding is, he thought that the state or, we're gonna stop it before he. So it was a conversation, and we did talk very frankly about concern about moving both else. Parents' choice for medical decisions for their children, that's gonna be a big thing, so. Which way? You know, parents control their children. I don't choose him to be pediatrician, but my children. So that was, but it was done, he heard that. That was that, so we did that, so we'll keep advocating, and focus, you know, to be geared towards what we'd like to unmask in six, eight or six. And we told it, the other people told it too, that teachers are grateful followers, you know.
You guys got a chance to share the statistics from our district, and so we could see that, so was he, might be asked in the future to come up with something like that, he's got maybe different thinking?
I mean, you know, you can only go so, you can only go so far.
Right.
We did the generic, asking for the change in those statistics. But I think the key piece was working together. You know, the cases are rising, what might we do, you know, the effects.
Thank you both for taking the time to have. Yeah, we're all busy, and we have this guy also, Dr. London is a busy man as well. Glad we were able to get together and just talk. Go away with, you know, same resolution, at least you heard the voice.
I felt good to represent your friends and have our voice heard, and like Heidi said, I wish he would have, how he spoke to us in that meeting, I really wish he would have been that way at the commissioners meeting, because we were two different people. Maybe in the future, maybe he will have a better way to handle it.
Yeah, similar to Heidi and Mr. Y, you know, in terms of getting our voice out into the public sector, I had an opportunity, Charlie Tinkler from WCCF reached out, asking, sent an email to me, I said, "Good morning, bring together a resource for parents to pass the CDC's final decision regarding the emergency authorization for Pfizer's vaccine for children five through eleven. If and when it does receive approval, is the district coordinating the local health officials with regard to WOLA? Does the district have a plan to host its own vaccination clinics? Is there any discussion of a vaccine requirement for children who would be eligible under the updated guidelines? My deadline is 5:00 PM this evening, any relevant information would greatly appreciate." I promptly responded to Charlie, "Thank you for discovering this important story for our county." Cedar Springs Public Schools is not planning to host any vaccine clinics on our campus. We will work with the Kent County Health Department to find appropriate locations in the region to support the clinic if needed. We will, or we took a similar approach, but the vaccine was made available in the fall for other groups. As a district, we believe that important medical decisions are best left to parents. At this time, I'm not aware of any vaccine requirement for children in the pipeline at the county, state, or national levels. That obviously was not a flashy enough quote, because it didn't make the story. I also spent time with Charlie in a later call, with Mike Schaefer retiring. Media sources in the county are looking to other superintendents to share some screen time. So I met with Charlie, we had a really nice conversation on the second. Again, speaking about similar things, unfortunately, that story didn't run, but we're trying to get the same message out, that our parents deserve an opportunity to have voice in these types of critical decisions. That will be the message that we continue to share, as given the opportunity in the public sector.
Thank you. All right, so moving on, we're planning our November twenty-second work session, six fifteen, at six fifteen. I'm suspected of being playing here, but we'll stay tuned for that. And remembering that we get any comments to Mr. Y from the forty page, that's the from M V S B, and we trust the show as well, I have no worries there. That's it for planning, and with that, we'll stand adjourned at eight twenty-six. Thank you.